Okay. Hello, everyone. We're back from non-public. While in non-public, no votes were taken. We discussed negotiations, personnel, and hiring. Okay. All right. The first item on our agenda is...
Should be the pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, but I don't see the pledge of allegiance.
I know. I took it off at the last meeting. Forgot to put it back on.
Okay. You want to stand for the pledge of allegiance? It's not on there, but that's what we do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Next, we have agenda review. Do we have anything to change with the agenda? We might need a second. Non-public, we'll see how it goes. And anything else we want to change to the agenda? Or add? No? Okay. All righty. Public comments. Okay, we can open up public comments?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing? Okay. All right. It is 7:04, so 7:34. If you think of something, just raise your hand. I will recognize you. All righty.
I'd like to make a public comment, and I'm gonna go over here, because as a parent. Eric Bowman's on Overlook Lane. I just wanted to, as this fall sports season wrapped up, I just wanted to share, as a parent, what I thought of the sports season. I had a child who played in one of the fall sports, and I just liked the idea of sports at the middle school age being about skill-building, teamwork. The kids work together, building confidence, I feel like, is really important. And I just feel like that should be focused on at this middle school level. That's all I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you. I will say that we did send out, I'm gonna let people know right now, we did send out a survey, an athletic survey, but the fall sports. The date was not correct. I think we should resend that out.
It wasn't correct. It's just that they sent it out on time.
It was sent out late, so the date ended up being expired by the time we sent out the survey. What is the new date now? Is it...
I'm sorry. The front door is locked.
Oh, okay.
What did we say? The 12th, right?
December 12th?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we resend the survey out and let people know? So the new date for the responses to be completed is December 12th. All right. So there was a mistake. It was sent out on the 25th, and it said the responses were due on the 17th. So we were a little late getting it out, but we do read all those comments and everything people said. We definitely do try to improve the program, so please.
I actually thought I had missed my opportunity, because the date was...
Yeah. Oh, okay. Well, please do it. The date's gonna be changed, right, to... We're gonna send it out again.
Just send that, yes.
Just send. Well, I just wanted to...
You got it. All over it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All righty. Next, the approval of the school board minutes from November 12th. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the non-public and public meeting minutes from November 12th.
Okay. Do we have a second? I will second. All right, discussion?
Be gentle. Haven't done them in a while.
Yep.
Did you fix it?
Yes.
Thanks.
I want to do the side door. Is that okay, or should I do the front?
Ask the board.
Okay.
That's what people expect.
Okay. I'll take that. Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Need more time? Nope. Good. Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yep.
And Debbie, yes? All righty. All right. Next. Okay, superintendent report. The manifest is not available. That will be available on Friday, did you say?
There is a payroll manifest.
Yeah, okay.
I already sent it in.
Okay. So I think you all read Adriana's email. So she will have it on Friday. So if you want during the weekend to pop in to sign that, that would be great. All right. Next. Action? New hires?
So we've got some new hires. Let's see. One was in your packet, and we've had two more come up since. We'll start with the one that was in your packet. So that was Erin Tantansky. She is a former employee, and she is looking to come back. We appreciated all of her efforts the last time, and strongly recommend that she be allowed to come back now. This would be up to seven hours a day, up to 30 hours a week. So it's 182 days per year, prorated, of course, and she's on the BABS Step 3.1 level at a rate of $18.57 per hour.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve, authorize the nomination of Erin Tantansky for the position of part-time paraprofessional at a rate of $18.57 per hour, to be paid for from the general fund, up to seven hours a day, up to 30 hours a week, effective...
Immediately.
Immediately.
Okay. Do we have a second? I will second. Discussion? So after we hire our next pair, how many open positions do we still have?
I didn't calculate that. I just actually found out about the full-time today, so...
Good. Okay. All right. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes? All righty.
All right. The next is a full-time paraprofessional, and this is hot off the presses. Katie Spatafora is looking to become a full-time paraprofessional. Once again, she's helped us out over the years when she's had time. She's now looking to become a full-time paraprofessional, strongly recommended by everybody involved. Seven hours a day, 35 hours a week. Once again, the prorated number of days for this year. She'll be on the BABS track, Step 2, at a rate of $18.32 an hour.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion? Do we have her?
No. This is, yes, I handed it out at the beginning of the meeting, but it wasn't part of your packet.
Okay. I'm just looking for her education. She's a bachelor's degree.
No, she's finished her bachelor's degree.
What is her major?
I don't know off the top of my head.
English literature?
See, is it professional English literature? Yep.
Okay.
So you asked to make a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I move we approve the nomination of Katie Spatafora for the position of full-time paraprofessional, effective immediately. Benefits for the CBA, up to seven hours a day, 35 hours a week, 182 days a year, at a rate of $18.32 per hour. And these benefits are prorated for the year, and this will be paid for from the general fund.
Okay. Do we have a second? I will second. Discussion? All right. We might as well also mention that she is the daughter of one of our teachers. So, which is wonderful. She's a local lady. Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yep.
And Debbie, yes?
No, you don't have to sign mine. You got to sign mine. Yours is part of the...
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry. I was wondering what you were...
All right. Next is a grade 7, 8 middle school math teacher. I know it feels like we've hired, like, seven of these. Every time we offer the positions, they end up needing to back out. So this is our latest effort. Nadine Voki-Lavoy. She came, interviewed with us. She did a great job with the interviews. The interview team was highly motivated by her. I feel strongly that she'll make a good addition to our district. She does know the pay. She does know the benefits. She is okay with the pay and the benefits, the way they are. So we've already had that conversation. So hopefully that is not a motivator to lose her as well. But, and she said she's willing to start as early as this coming Monday. So we thought it would be good for her to maybe get a little bit of that introduction to the school and the students prior to the holiday break. So we think that's probably a good idea to do that. Once again, let's see where she's at. So she is gonna be eight hours a day, 40 hours a week, 188 days prorated. She's a BA track, Step 15. She's been in the business well over 15 years. I don't know the exact number, but it's quite a while. She is certified in math K-8, so we actually are getting a certified math teacher here.
That's great.
Not some of the other situations that we've had in the past. And she'd be, we don't worry about the hourly rate. We look at the yearly rate, so she'd be at $64,916. Once again, prorated for the remainder of the year.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move we approve the nomination of Nadine Voki-Lavoy for 7, 8 middle school math teacher, effective immediately, for a salary of $64,916 prorated for the remainder of the year. Benefits for the CBA, those are also prorated, and this is to be paid for from the general fund.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Discussion? I'm seeing in her cover letter that she also has taught something about a concentration in science. So she also has, like, a background in teaching science. She has taught...
Looks like she has taught education in biology.
So she said she has, yeah. So that's great. So she's a math teacher, and she's been a science teacher. So she's taught mathematics for the majority of my teaching career, however, I've taught science and other subjects as well.
She's true of a lot of teachers nowadays.
And understands the connection between math and science. We've talked about that a lot. That's interesting. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or notice anything? All right. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes?
All right. That is it for new hires. David Fisher. So David has been working for us for a while now as a long-term substitute school counselor. And as Nicole has returned, and we had come up with that plan to have David fill in for the two days a week when Nicole can't be here, we had realized David was an asset to us, because we had Jeff Merrill step away. Now, he is not acting in Jeff's place on an official stance of like he is an administrator. He is basically a support mechanism for Natalie. So when Natalie needs somebody to go and speak with a kid in the classroom, or, you know, basically, it's almost like an extension of a school counselor, just with a little more authority. Like, for example, today, we had a meeting where we needed an administrator present. None of us could be there. David stepped in to hear that part and to be part of that for that meeting. So he is filling in five days a week like he was before. He's still here. He still is a long-term sub. We haven't changed anything about what he's doing for us. He's just now, because of his certifications and credentials, he's just helping us provide that additional support for Natalie when there's gaps and extra needs in the building, so...
So we had approved him for two days to complement...
Well, we approved the plan for Nicole. So Nicole Alley was where I'd said, hey, we need Nicole for three days a week. David's willing to fill in those other two. What we were doing was approving him for that, to support her in that role. We don't normally come to the board for subs, like we...
For long-term, you do.
Once again, we haven't always, and that wasn't even part of our consideration when we were talking about him helping Natalie out. It doesn't even fill the criteria for long-term sub, to be honest with you at that point. So the part that is the long-term sub is still what he's doing and helping Nicole on those two days when she's not here. What we're doing with him for Natalie is, like I said, he's just helping us out. It's not even, I mean, he's being paper out of the sub-line, but he's not acting in a role above sub. He's just helping us out with what he's credentialed and certified to do. So anyway, that's all I can tell you. It's nothing official. Like, that's what I'm trying to say. It's like, he's helping us out. We're thankful for him being here. He goes and answers a lot of, like, pages. He goes and helps us out when we need it. It's just been a really great help to have him here. So it's nothing official.
I think we should have a motion to approve Dave to work an additional three days a week and to be a support for Natalie in Jeff's absence.
I think that we, so I don't know, did... So I guess, this is my question. So we found out about Jeff's official absence through, like, a... Because I'm a parent, I guess, was that just a middle school parents, or is the whole school aware?
I don't know if it went to everybody, or if it just went to the middle school.
Okay. Just, I'm just thinking, we're discussing having somebody in his absence, and that he stepped away. I think that we just, I feel like, I don't know to what explanation you could give, that it's just he's, like, out on a temporary leave. I guess...
He's out on leave. That's all I think I'd feel comfortable saying, just because it's his leave, and I don't...
Right. Right. That's, I just, to other people, you know what I mean? It's just like...
They don't understand what's going on.
Yeah. We're putting somebody, we're nominating a long-term sub in his place. It's just...
And it's not even a long-term sub, but it's somebody who's not a...
He's just helping out.
Because he's not an administrator.
Yep.
So just for people watching, our middle school dean is out on leave, and so in his absence...
Natalie has taken over both roles, and I'm supporting Natalie, but we still felt that we had too many gaps where she and I couldn't be three people. We can only still be two people. He becomes a third person that we can say, hey, in these non-critical places, these non-critical roles, can you go and step in, be our eyes, be our ears, report back to us? He does not give consequences. He does not assign discipline. He's, like I said, the best way to describe this, he's kind of like counseling even on the days when he's not Nicole's opposite. He's just, he's kind of helping us out. Like I said, he's helping us out where we need some extra help.
So he's at offering support. He is a guidance coordinator. He's offering support to help Natalie while the dean, the middle school dean, is out on leave. I do think we should make an official, that the board has approved this. So if you want to make a motion to approve Dave Fisher working three days a week to support Natalie while the middle school dean is out, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Is this, is this at...
Through early January.
The substitute?
Yeah, we're just paying him sub, a sub pay. That's all it is. It's just...
All right. So it's just basically calling attention to it, and...
Great. I just wanted to make a motion.
All right. So I move we authorize David Fisher in his role, helping out the administration as a substitute, three days a week, performing the roles as previously described by Rob here, through, at this point, through January.
Yeah. And once again, it's in addition to what he's doing with Nicole as well. So it is in that role as well. So it's really five days a week that he's here, but that's just a side note to make sure it's... Somebody doesn't think suddenly, well, my buddy was here two days, now he's here three, now he's actually here five.
Does anybody want a second?
I will second.
And Mr. Fisher is a certified guidance counselor. He is working two days a week.
And a former administrator as well, so he has a...
Does he have his degree as an administration?
Yeah. So he has a lot of background and a lot of different...
That certification? That's awesome.
It's not, I don't think it's from Hampshire Certification, I guess.
That's perfect. Okay. All right. Great. Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes? All righty.
And sorry I didn't bring that before. Like I said, we normally don't bring subs. That's why I wasn't even thinking about it in that capacity, but anyway, it's all official now.
Okay.
So financial software. In addition to what I put in the packet, I've done a much more detailed and much more formal-looking handout that I put in front of you earlier, because I thought, you know, once again, I think it's important for you to see financials, to see the due diligence that we went through. What I'll do is, in a nutshell, say this. Our current system, I'm not gonna name it by name, because I don't want to have any negativity out there. I'm just gonna say our current system is not servicing the three of us well. We have a lot of headaches and heartaches. Our CPA and, and right now, our payroll person, because it's so messed up, we have to have a payroll person, are also frustrated by the difficulties that this software provides us. We have, for a long time, been waiting, because this company got bought out. We've been waiting for the company to buy them out, to provide their new product to us. We've been promised on multiple occasions that rollout. Two July 1s in a row now we've been promised, and it's failed to come through. The most recent update we had was through our payroll expert, who went to a special training that was provided by that company, and they said they're looking at at least 15 more months. And I can't wait. I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm at the point, I'm at a breaking point, and I won't speak for them. But you've got two other people that use this software daily sitting in the room. If you want more people to say, this is desperately needed. So we have done due diligence. We did some serious research. Vadar is a financial software product. They would take over one aspect of what we do. Harper's is a payroll company. They would take over the other aspect of what we do. Every single thing we have looked into on these companies is positive. I've done three independent reference checks. The third one hadn't come in yet, but I did get that one today. And the comments by these folks is just that they're in love. They love the software. They love the customer service. These companies, and some of these, like, some are just changing over, and others have been with them for eight, 10, 12 years. So there's a lot of different groups that I was talking to here. One company, I had two different people provide feedback. Another company, I had a person I was talking to, and in the background, I could hear her boss, "Don't forget to tell them!" And I could hear blah, blah, blah. "Don't forget to tell them!", blah, blah. No, it was a little bit later. So she was excited to make sure that we knew that this, that these companies are really, really great. Harper's is just nationally recognized. They've been in business longer, and they are a major payroll company. Vadar is, I would say, comparatively more of an upstart. It's been in business for 30-something years. It is, once again, everybody that uses them loves them, and the biggest thing we hear about over and over and over again is their customer service. They customize everything to our need. So reports that we need, New Hampshire Retirement, all these different things that we struggle with right now, they help customize and get it into, basically, a direct export. So every week or every pay period, we have to export to New Hampshire Retirement. Right now, we have to pay our CPA extra money to spend hours trying to get it so that it uploads properly. Vadar will create a system, and Harper's together will create a system where we get that export, and it is automatic, and it's aligned with New Hampshire Retirement and what needs to go into New Hampshire Retirement, eliminating those additional costs from that. Payroll, we won't need a payroll expert anymore. The payroll software is very organized, very structured. April and I looked at it carefully through the evaluation process, and we just, we, you know, we love Rose, but we won't need to pay $12,000 a year for a payroll expert anymore. So the savings, I believe, will offset, not only, because right now, we're budgeting $18,500 for the current program, it's still gonna be $18,500 locked in for three years. The first year, it is $500 more, because Harper's does have a transfer fee. The setup that they have to do is $500, but if you take that out of it, it's $18,492.67, which is precisely what we're paying, right, 18.5. It's actually a tiny bit less than what we currently are budgeting for the current software that we can't stand. So there's no price problems here. It's what we were already gonna be budgeting. The product is apparently considerably better. People are extremely excited, and they will have us up and running July 1 of 2026. And they said that is not a problem, and the people I talked to, same thing. Like, one company needed Harper's on board in less than two months. They met the deadline, and they got it done. We have way longer than two months to get this done. The two systems talk to each other, so all the numbers that are in one are the same numbers that are in the other. When you guys say, can you give me payroll POs and things of that nature? The answer is yes. When we, we right now currently can't do an official PO process. They have this little side system that they have that they created themselves to have POs. We won't need to do that anymore. We'll actually have real POs within the software, within the software product. So once again, if you go through this, hopefully you've had an opportunity to read through what I gave you already. I know you probably haven't had time to read through this. We really want the board to say yes. And I haven't felt this emphatic about something since I've been here, so that's how big of a deal this is to us. And we couldn't believe it when we got the price. We heard everything else but the price. When we finally got the price, we were like, no way that the price aligns with the not impressive system that we are currently using.
And it's much, much less than Tyler.
Oh, yeah. Only $500 to transfer. I think the other one that, once again, I'm staying away from names, but there was another service that we had looked at a couple of years ago. It was $52,000 to transfer us over.
So is there ADP, is such a big payroll company, is there a reason? Did you look at that?
We did, and it did not work. It doesn't match up with us. And there was actually one of the companies, one of the other districts that we spoke to en masse, were looking at, another company, I'm trying to stay away from names, were looking at another company, similar to what you were just saying, and they ended up choosing this, and they said they are so happy that they did, that Harper's is truly a very, very impressive software product.
So are, there won't be any overlap in services between the two companies, our current software provider and this new?
So, no, are, so, okay, between what we currently have, the answer, the answer is yes and no. We are not gonna transfer anything from our current software into the new software, because there's a lot of issues with our current information, the current data, everything else. And when we spoke to one of the other schools that is making the similar transfer, they too chose not to transfer that data, because it is a mess. What we will do is, we will work carefully with Vadar to come up with, making sure that we have all of our account lines and everything else, that they're aligned with state accounting numbers. They'll make sure all that's set, and as soon as we get that set, they will then give it to Harper's, and Harper's will put all of that into their system. We then also will create a separate spreadsheet of all of our vendors. And so all of our vendors, because when we were looking in our current software, we could find multiple addresses, multiple phone numbers, multiple entries of the same vendors. We also find tons of entries of vendors that we no longer use, or don't even know when they ever were used. So this list that we will be putting into Vadar will be precisely the vendors that we have with the current information. The reason I said it's not exact, though, is because we will have that other software product until December 31st.
Of 2026.
That, that's what I'm, so... So that's the part where we will have overlap. And that way, we can do our end-of-the-year DOE 25, MS 25, our audit and everything else with active logs and records that we can search and we can go in and do. We will have them through December 31st. We have to pay for them out of this year's budget, the current year's budget, on January, well, I think it's already been paid, right? It's already been paid, but it goes into effect January 1. It goes from January 1 to December 31st. The new software companies start July 1 and go through June 30th. So they will overlap for those months, but we will not use that software after July 1, except to take care of reporting and auditing purposes.
And it looks like the other company has provided us a discount for the 26th year.
They have, because they have failed to meet their obligations to us.
Okay.
So how does this impact the budget that you have given us?
Not at all. I had already, I had already budgeted 18.5.
Okay. So this is no increase?
No.
At all?
No. We'll pay the extra 400 out of the savings we have in this year's budget. We'll pay that prior to July 1.
Anybody have questions?
Will there be additional savings in the budget we're going over for things like not having a payroll?
So I had already reduced that line considerably with hopes that we were going to not have it. So that has already been reflected in there. If you say no, then I'd probably have to put at least $12,000 back in, but I'm not saying that to twist your arm. I'm just simply saying, I was already trying to anticipate what I hoped you were going to do.
So did you, you mean, did you lower...
The budget is already $12,000 less than...
Was it our CPA that you lowered, or what did you lower?
The payroll person.
So what about the...
CPA, it's, I, he's, we always under-budget him. And so our hope is that this year, what we're budgeting will actually be what he'll actually cost. So every year, if you look back, we've never budgeted enough to cover what we've had to pay him.
So at this point, the new software, other than getting ready for an audit, what else do we need him for?
So he does our DOE 25, MS 25, MS 24, MS 22. He does all EMS reports throughout the year. That would still be required. We might not need him anymore for quarterly taxes, or for IRS, or for New Hampshire Retirement. We're hoping that we won't need him anymore. Like, we jokingly said in the meeting, we might be doing planned... Like we, we jokingly said in the meeting, we might be doing planned, um, elimination of his position, he said he's okay with that. Um, you know, obviously he works for us a, as, at our need and wouldn't it be nice if we didn't need him as much? So once again, a year from now, like next October when we're budgeting, I may be able to reduce him dramatically or even, who knows, he might go away. I just, until somebody's prepared to do the DOE and MS twenty-fives and twenty-twos and twenty-fours, he'll probably stay with us.
How many hours does he spend?
A lot. But once again, we believe most of those hours are because he spends so much time trying to find the information he needs in a very disabled computer software product.
So if he has the numbers, it shouldn't?
It may take a lot less time and if it becomes that simple, I mean, one of the things we're hoping is Vadar has customized reports. Wouldn't it be neat if I could program in the numbers I need and get the reports directly? Then I wouldn't need them at all.
You would still need to have him review it.
I would think so, but once again, are we talking a couple hours a year?
Right.
Versus thirty-something thousand this last year? You know, it's a big difference.
Well, at SAU forty-four, we had the business administrator from Harvard who outsourced to the audit, auditors our MS twenty-five and DOE twenty-five.
Yeah. In fairness, the DOE and MS twenty-fives are not easy to figure out. I know a lot of BAs that spent a lot of time struggling with those documents, but once again, we are very hopeful that the software product's going to dramatically reduce those, uh, external costs, the contract and services costs.
Any else have questions? Um, I do want, can we scan these documents you gave us and attach it to our packet online?
Sure.
Because I, I want to be able to say we have all this documentation to the reason why we chose it, because if you don't put it, if you don't put it in the packet, it's gone forever and they can't remember it.
I will say, like, it's nice to see, like, the reference checks and whatnot. I feel like, I feel like we've been through this a few times.
Have you?
Exactly, yes.
I, I just could say, you've been with this software company since you've been existing for decades.
No, we, we were, we did some other thing, um, remember, that was that one of business administrator?
Yeah, no, it's just like, yeah, I feel like it's like, like, I'm just, I'm glad to see that there's actual reference checks because before it was, this is the next step. This is great, this solves all of our problems.
I tried to anticipate every question you might have.
You know, so it's just like?
That's why I even created the additional report and I'm like, I was the other day thinking, I'm like, I'm not sure if the work happens enough. I think they're gonna want more and so that's when I just, I said, what else can I do?
When you say packet Debbie, you mean the minutes, right?
Um, well, I mean, the packet that's online, our packets are saved.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So that, I mean, we could, we could, we could scan it in the minutes.
No, I, I didn't.
I just don't want this to disappear.
Yeah.
You know what happens?
Yep.
Nobody remembers, it doesn't all get put in the minutes.
Yep.
And then we say, what did they save?
As long as it's, uh?
And then they come back and say, it's all archived.
As long as it's archived, yeah.
It'll be in the report.
Yes, okay. All right, all right, so does anybody wanna make a motion?
Please.
I move we authorize, um, Rob to enter into agreement with Vadar Financial Software, Harper's Payroll Services as presented to us in this paperwork, um, for the three-year total of fifty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents effective July first, twenty twenty-sixth through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Great, we have a second, we have a second discussion. So we did ask Rob if this would increase our budget at all and it does not. It is basically the same cost as, as the other software and the payroll.
And it might actually give us more fundamentals next year if it works out the way we're hoping.
Uh, we also have been using a CPA who is not cheap, um, to do some of the, spent a lot of time sharing, creating our government forms and preparing for the audit and because of the issues we've had with the financial software we have right now, it takes him a lot more time, so we should see some savings of that as well. So, great, that is a good price actually.
Yeah, I think it's a phenomenal price. I was, wasn't I? I was like, oh my gosh, they're gonna come back with like thirty-five thousand dollars or something.
Because when we were looking originally for the SAU, we looked at that other company and it was gonna be?
It's a sorber, fifty-two thousand dollar transfer fee.
And it was a lot a year.
Yeah.
Okay, Katrina?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
And Debbie, yes. All right, so they're all so happy, look at the smiles, everybody's smiling.
We're really impressed with them, so. All right, ongoing completed board meeting tasks, items, anything? I mean, it's relatively short this time because our meeting last time was mostly focused on the budget.
Oh, what is going on with the heating units in the gym?
Sure. So we have to break, so they, they have, they need a full work week, so five work days to repair one. Uh, so it's gonna take two work weeks to repair both. The earliest week we had that, that is in Christmas break or holiday break, because the holiday break, the person's not available, uh, was February break and we were like, look, we need some heat in there, that room is cold. Uh, so they are gonna come in the week of the fifteenth and they're gonna repair one unit. We've already worked with our PE teacher.
December?
Yeah, December, so we've got one unit up and running, she's gonna figure out a way to keep all the kids, like, every kid will miss, well, not every kid, but most kids will miss at least one class, but we'll figure it out, she'll figure it out, we're gonna work together, we'll get to that point, but we'll have one unit working which will at least get some heat into that space. Over February break, which is a week when there's no students here, so we won't have to worry about that again, they will come back and do the second unit. And that's been verified, uh, with the ENE, it's all, it's good to go, it's in their schedules and calendars, we're, we're good. All right?
Yep.
Anything else on the ongoing items? Did you guys take, have a chance to look at the webpage? Was it what you were hoping?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance yet, I'll look.
Okay, so take a look at it, um, it's, I'm hoping it meets your needs. Uh, this is definitely a board request, so, um, you know, I, I did run it through Natalie, through several other folks. All the feedback was, yeah, you hit it, I'm, there was a few people that asked for a slight tweaks to some of it, so those tweaks have been made. It's, I think, up to date at this point.
Okay.
All right, um, let's see, next, assistant principal job description, that came home in your packets, if anybody doesn't have it, I do have an extra copy.
Can, can we, um?
Want me to give an update on?
Have, well, I would like you to give an update on that, but can we, with that description, can we take some time to give you feedback on it?
Oh yeah.
Because when we, are we going to post like in January?
That was the plan, right?
Right.
That we would post in January.
So do people feel comfortable, like, sort of sending Rob an email if you have a question? Because I think there's so much in there.
Hey, just not do it tonight?
Well, it, it's up to you, I mean, you can still?
No, I'm, I'm good with sending an email.
So what if I share with, I don't know if you like this idea, what if I share with you a live document where you have comment rights and you can add comments? Would that be better or would you just rather send me an email?
You could do either one.
I don't, yeah, I don't mind, I, if my computer will work to do it, I can share comments.
Yes, I like comments too. But, so we can both, do both.
I'll share it, maybe before this meeting's over by that time.
Good, perfect, this way we can take our time, we have several weeks.
Did you want me to explain what's going on, like, why we have, because I earlier said it wasn't clear why we're posting, so? Um, we had discussed a while ago that, um, moving forward into next year, we were looking at Natalie taking over as the building principal. Uh, she, we've had multiple conversations, she has agreed to do so. There's still some negotiations on the contract that are needed, but once again, Natalie has agreed to take on that role starting on July one. What we want to do is to supplement the two administrators by having her as principal and bringing on a assistant principal. We felt that going with an assistant principal would be more attractive to the broader administrative community. Deans of students aren't necessarily the most widely understood or, or appreciated positions and that an assistant principal is definitely the language that is used most often in this type of a position. We'd also wanna make it very clear this person is working for the principal, uh, and that this person is largely going to be centered around discipline and certain other aspects that will be assigned to them. So once again, just, um, that was what's going on with that, that's why we have an assistant principal job description that we'll be working on. The goal is to post that position in January and to have Natalie, uh, head up that committee so that she's definitely gonna be part of making sure that it's the right match, it's the, you know, something that complements her, supports her, et cetera. And we're hoping, fingers crossed, if we can get the salary right, we get the job description right, that hopefully we can get somebody with some experience so that Natalie is gonna have somebody that doesn't need as much handholding through the initial period like we normally would have to do with folks. So that is the hope, that we get somebody with some experience.
Since it's been a few years since we've had a principal, or, or, um, since the principal job description, will that be updated also?
That's what we're doing.
No, the?
The principal job description. Oh, that's a great point, I haven't even looked at it, so yes, why don't I look at that too?
Great, good question.
And the, the intent with, so we had gone to kind of the two schools under one roof?
Right.
But this doesn't necessarily follow suit with that, right? It's not that the assistant principal would be middle school or elementary?
No, the principal would be K to eight and the assistant principal would be K to eight, supporting the principal. We have decided, Natalie and I, that our thoughts are that this person would be more middle school centered to make sure that elementary provides us with relatively small numbers of discipline and behavioral related concerns. Middle school provides us with relatively significant numbers. Um, our hope would be is to put a lot of that person's attention on focusing on the middle school from a this behavioral disciplinary aspect, making sure that we're bringing the right programming in, making sure the students are getting their direct and immediate interventions, uh, working closely with school counseling to make sure that those are happening and that they're being meaningful, effective. So that is the hope and that Natalie would, as the principal, would take on the teacher level, like supervision evaluation for K to eight as well as any of the behavior stuff that maybe is going on with the elementary to try and keep the focus really on that. So once again, as we talked about it, that's kind of how it's unfolding in our minds, but at the same time, we have that flexibility to adjust that and tweak that as we move forward.
And just like we were bringing up the two schools under one roof, when we initially talked about this a couple of years ago, we did say that we, depending on how we might re-approach bringing back up to the traditional?
Yes.
Principal, assistant principal layout.
Right.
So we're, we're still sticking with what we originally told the town.
Right, right.
And I would still argue that we're still trying to make sure there's a distinctive elementary and a distinctive middle school, their own, like, a lot of the stuff is remaining that distinctive feel. It's just that when we came down to administration, we just feel that keeping a consistent person, a person that's known, when Jeff said he was leaving, the first thought we had is, boy, do we really wanna start over with the middle school with a fresh base? No. And to be honest with you, with him being out right now on leave, it's actually given us our first feel at it and I think it's going relatively well. I mean, I'm kind of filling in as part of that assistant principal role for Natalie. Um, like I said earlier, David's kind of helping fill in some of those components, the school counselor is stepping up and filling in some of those components. I think all of our teaching staff has stepped up those efforts because they recognize Natalie can't do it alone, you know, we all recognize that. So we're all filling in and helping out where we can, when we, where we can provide the most support. And we're starting to get that feel already and I can just tell you, everybody's impressed. Middle school people have been commenting on how great they love, they love Natalie, how great they feel like that is feeling. So I, I think we're heading in the right direction with that.
That's great.
I do.
And there's nothing wrong with still being one school, there's something special about a K through eight school, I mean, really, there is something special.
But we wanna make sure that they still feel like they've got that individual support, right? That was a big reason why we gave this a try was because elementary was saying, I don't feel like I've got my people, middle saying, I don't feel like we've got our people. So we're still, everybody's just still got their people. It, I just think that one place that it's gonna be a little different is at the principal level, so.
Okay, so we're going to the budget, budget, budget.
Budget, budget.
All right. All right, let's see, so Rob mentioned that he had highlighted some of the changes the last time.
Yep, they're all in pink, pinkish, I don't know if that's pink or not, but it looks pinky pink. So we should go down through, um, I also gave some other handouts to you. I mean, I haven't redone everything, obviously you can share with me what you'd like me to do more of. But looking at the paraprofessionals, a slight shift there, um, for the regular ed paras. And that's gonna support one of the additional, uh, want items. Looking at, uh, having that tutor, the lab tutor, once again, that helps with that want item that was on the want list. Uh, we were able, we finally got CBNA's actual numbers, so this is now accurate to CBNA. I did reduce the padding a bit, um, so that, you know, once again?
Three students, you'd have three instead of five?
Yeah, three versus five and then on the out of district people, it's down to one versus I think we had two or three in there, I can't remember which, but, uh, so reduce the padding a bit. We don't tend to see out of districts that aren't already going to Co Brown. So I figure that most of those that go out of district would be students that we would be paying, so it's like almost double dipping by padding both, but we do tend to get at least one a year that is like a homeschool or moved in and says, I want my kid to still go to Pittsfield or still go, remember we had that happen last year? So I did wanna keep a padding in there just because it's, I don't know that for sure.
You have to keep it padded because it's a lot of money if, uh, we have a bunch of it for. So, so Co Brown went up, regular ed, almost five percent? I think that's the largest jump I can remember. Yep.
So that was that and then, um, let's see, we adjusted classified a little bit, nothing major there. CBNA on the special ed line, same thing, it's just it's now actual numbers, reduce the padding, save us a little bit more money there.
So what was the percentage increase on that?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, uh, the CBNA's in here, it would be flip to, give me a sec, I'll tell you which tab I had you put it in.
Tab seven.
Thank you.
The, yeah.
So you can see, it was a four point nine seven percent increase for regular tuition and skills was five point seven oh increase. Yep. So those are large increases, I mean, if you look at the historical increases, those are more than normal. Last year's was big too though, so that's two years in a row with fairly significant increases. Uh, slight decrease to DOT speech language line, we were able to bring that down some. Um, counseling?
So counseling, um?
It's one point eight, so she works four days a week and I had put in for two full time, but since Nicole's returning, I just brought it to what the actual was, one point eight.
Okay, and do, um, both, so how, I guess I'm trying to, the buyout line, is that the, still the correct amount? Like, do both qual, so qualify at one, the one point eight?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, because remember it's that thirty hour line and point eight is more than thirty hours. Let's see, just continuing to flip through with the changes. Uh, retirement teacher, uh, we don't have anybody retiring next year and they have to tell us by now, so I know that line can be zero. So I just reduced it to zero for next year because we don't have any retirees. Um, that doesn't mean people won't leave, but this is a retirement line, so that's why I figured that was safe to do.
Can we, unless we wanna, can we go back to something?
Oh sure, what do you want? Sorry, I went too fast, I apologize.
It looks like potentially the salary for the nurse shows an increase, but I don't, shouldn't it stay level?
She is changing tracks.
Oh, tracks, okay, perfect.
Yep, yep. Good question. Sorry, didn't catch that, but that's a track change, yeah.
This is available online too, isn't it? Didn't you post it?
Yes.
I just wanted people to know that it's available as well. I'm seeing one of them.
I, I had some highlights.
Do you want me to finish the ones I changed or?
Well, i- if you want, I just want to look to the, yeah.
I just want to make sure I don't miss out on exploding the ones I changed. Okay. Let's see here, course reimbursement curriculum, reduce that a little bit, not much, just a little bit. Let's see, and once again, it's just because I'm looking at the past and saying, we've never come close to spending the full amount. So I think we have room to flex that down just a little bit again. Same thing with the workshops, it's just flexing because I, you know, once again, you guys have said, take a sharp, sharpen your pencil to this thing, so that's what I tried to do. Books, periodicals, same thing, just trying to bring it closer to what I think we would actually spend. Audiovisual technology, we took away some of the interactive displays. It was more and I took away some of those to bring that down a little bit more. District legal expenses, it's not a, any sort of negotiations next year. I think running at twenty thousand was too much or nineteen thousand's too much. So I reduced that down to sixteen, once again, just a couple thousand dollars, but every little bit helps get that percentage down. The payroll software is at twenty thousand. Once again, I could reduce that to eighteen five now, or eighteen, yeah, eighteen five now that I have that specific number. At the time I did this, I didn't have that number nor did I have your approval. So we were just anticipating next year G-Works was going to be more expensive than it is this year, so that's why I put it at twenty. Because this year's eighteen five, I assumed next year would be a little bit more. But if you want, I can reduce that. Would you like me to do that?
I'm still looking at legal.
Oh, you're legal, I'm sorry.
Okay, because I'm thinking, so we did combine.
Yes.
The school board and the SAU.
Correct.
Right?
And this is showing those combined numbers, so we're just, we haven't been spending our full amount.
Okay.
This year we probably will.
Right.
Based on where the negotiations are going.
Yes.
But we are doing everything in our power to make sure we're not reaching out to legal unless it's absolutely necessary. So we're trying to keep our end of things down because we know you guys are going to go up.
Yes. All right, everybody remember that? We used to have legal two different lines. All right, I'm sorry.
No problem. So anyway, I can change that. That would be a couple of fifteen hundred dollars savings, so eighteen five on the G-Works, I'll change that. Workshops.
Eighteen nine, because that, this, we have the.
I told you I'm going to pay for the five hundred transfer fee out of this year's budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
So much money this year.
Sorry, yep.
Actually, I could expend the full amount of this year's line, which is like, what do we have? I can tell you what we had in there. I gotta get back to the right page.
Did you say that we might have an unanticipated?
So this year we budgeted eighteen thousand, oh, let me answer that in just a moment. This year we budgeted eighteen thousand dollars, but we only need thirteen five? It was less than that.
It was like twelve.
So twelve something, okay, so close to thirteen. So that leaves us a five thousand dollars. I could pay the first five thousand dollars of the new software product out of this year. And reduce this line by more than the fifteen hundred, six to five hundred.
I, I want to know more about the possible unanticipated out of district placement for this year. So you're, because I, I don't know if we should spend down.
I can't tell you that.
Okay.
Because it's unanticipated, it's unanticipated and it hasn't happened.
Okay, so I guess where I'm going is we don't want to like deplete this current budget all the way if we know we might have some unanticipated expenses this year.
I would say if we know that prior to the annual meeting or prior to the deadline cutoff, we would want to add it. But right now I, I don't want to do that because it's truly unknown.
I think you could.
She's talking about.
Current year.
Yeah.
This current budget that you want to take money out of to pay for this.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
Well, I think that expense is potentially so large that it's, it would be coming out of.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't worry about the five thousand dollars.
Well, the way things were going, that, that March fund could be depleted quickly, so, I don't know.
So leave, are you saying leave?
I, I don't think that we should, you know, start taking things out of the current budget yet.
Okay.
I guess that's where I'm going.
Okay.
So I'll just reduce that to eighteen five then. Or like Eric said, actually I'll make it nineteen, just a nice even number. And that way the whole amounts. All right, let's see here, professional development, for school admin, that was something we agreed to, let's see here. Oh, the dam, I took out the, so our annual fee went from seven fifty to fifteen hundred, but according to our engineers, the dam's going to be gone by late summer. Our bill comes in for the dam, I think it was in October. So my hope is I don't have to pay it next year. So I'm not going to plan to budget it. Does that sound safe enough to you?
Why are you, I don't understand.
I'm just going by pink, so page nine.
Oh, oh, I see.
Sorry, yeah, bottom right hand corner, page nine. It, it's line twenty six twenty, fifty four thirty, zero zero five, repairs, damp maintenance facilities. I had fifteen hundred dollars in there. Because we knew that next year it was doubling in price, but then we got our bill, which came in October. The engineers have confirmed we are still on track for a late summer removal of the dam that just came in like two weeks ago. I figured I could take that fifteen hundred out completely. Because by next October, we shouldn't have a dam that I've got it before. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure you felt the same way I did. Transporting athletic teams, I'm just basing it off of actuals. I mean, we keep budgeting ten thousand, but. We're not spending ten thousand dollars, so I figured I could trim a couple thousand from there as well.
Well, the reason we didn't spend ten thousand dollars last year is because the fall season, we did not trans.
But I'm looking at this year's current and we're not on track to spend ten thousand this year either.
Okay. And we also, we transferred four kids from basketball, we did, but we didn't do the fall season at all last year.
Yep.
Okay.
So our new bottom line, before we get to Eric's and everybody's questions, was we're now at fourteen million, one hundred and four thousand, six hundred and twenty nine dollars, which is a four point four percent increase. Or a difference of just shy of six hundred thousand dollars. So we went from four point nine to four point four. Actually, if you go way back, we went from seven point something, I can't remember anymore. What was it way back when?
Seven point nine.
Seven point nine, all the way down to four point four. So I don't know how to sharpen the pencil anymore. I'm open to any suggestions you have.
And also we have not added the cost of living increases for non-CBA people. So that will change the bottom line as well.
I have a question. Back to that. Second line on the first page, salaries for para regular, regular education. And it says, two paras in kindergarten and one in middle school. I thought we only said three kindergarten paras.
We did.
We do, and the suggestion was made that we don't need three. And I wanted a middle school para, so the idea was is that since we only have two elementary paras. Our two kindergarten paras, that we use that third position to get the middle school para without increasing the budget. Remember my wish list?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Green sheet.
Didn't you have?
And it just said, it just said added one, so that's why I was thinking we added one.
The thing that's been added is the tutor. So the wish list has not been, I mean, may not completely align with the budget at this point. Some of these changes have happened since that was updated.
Okay, so you're saying, okay, so it.
No, that's fine. I was just, because I was at, the, the wish list is what I was looking at, where it says we added a regular education para and then.
Which is not the case.
But we have not, we've just relocated.
We were going to, and then, like I said, that suggestion was made. And as a result, I did not have to add that to accomplish that.
And do you think the seventy five thousand dollars is enough for three pairs? Because we had, we adopted eighty five thousand dollars.
Well, that's level funding. And I remember I'm not allowed.
No.
With, well, remember, once again, it's all based on current salaries and what I project for a para for next year.
I understand that.
This is an unknown para.
Now, now I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
My other possible suggestion is, is so we've, I, our budget obviously is increasing steeply this year. And the biggest driver is special education and because of that, we're, we've been cutting from regular education to account for it. One of the extras that we have put in, that I just thought we could potentially take a look at. Is that we only technically needed a part-time, an additional part-time special education teacher. And we have a full-time in there. We always talk about, once you go full-time. I know that there's, there's two ways to look at it. It's hard to hire somebody that's harder to hire someone with part-time, but we. You then are including the extra retirement and benefits as well as the extra half-time in the position. So that would probably be like a fifty thousand dollar savings, potentially. I don't.
I'm not seeing, oh, replaced and added. I'm confused because the amount that's proposed is very, is actually close to what was adopted the last time.
Which line are you looking at?
You're looking at the special teachers, right?
But it could be because the personnel's changed, because somebody left.
Yep, we're going for more expensive people for less expensive.
Yeah.
Um, you can't, you can't compare this year to next year with too many places.
I, I agree with what you're saying, Katrina. But I feel like, personally, I feel like we need to get somebody in that position. And if we can only find, you know, I, I hate to limit us even further. But if somebody wanted to work half-time, that'd be great, but I hate, I hate to limit us.
Okay.
For that.
No, and I, I agree. I guess it's just one of those where I was like, okay, we are going to like the bare minimum that we can survive with on.
Yeah.
All of this stuff. And in this one, we are going above where we need it to be. It was just kind of a check and balance.
Yeah.
Like.
So with the out of district placement, we know that we don't have control over that. Although we were looking to see in the future if we could possibly find maybe have a contract with a local district. Since our, since our local.
On my wish list.
Our, I just want to bring that up for other people.
Oh, okay, I guess, okay, I thought you wanted to add it, oh, I already did.
We are having, it's sometimes when, when a student needs special education that we can't offer them the program. We have to find a placement and that can be someplace that needs, it's far away or transportation is an issue. And so we were looking to see if maybe we could possibly reach out to one of the local high schools, not Co Brown. Because Co Brown does not offer a lot of, a lot of these services, to see if we can have a, maybe a contract with them so that we could. It's easier to place and that the kids are closer and that might be helpful. So just for people who are listening, we are investigating other ways. And we're still wanting to meet the kids' needs, of course. All right, so.
Yeah, so I would, like, for example, currently, we still, there still will be changes to the budget because we have to add in non-PA pay raises. But currently, we're showing an increase of four point four percent, so again, that will be more, but the dollar amounts five hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. The increase in out of district placements tuition line is five hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Yes.
So that is essentially almost all of our increase. So otherwise, we've kept, we're keeping basically a level budget. I mean.
As close to one as we can.
I mean, it's so.
But our special ed overall increase is more than that, because I think we're actually cutting.
Well, no, we are, that's the thing. We, we really are cutting other things to get to this point.
Just so you know, I did put in the five thousand, the sixty thousand dollars for the teacher without, you know, retirement or any of the benefits. Just putting FICA in salary, it brought us down to three point nine percent. About half a percent. Just, I just wanted to give you the.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So what do you think? I mean, I think when people think about that, do you think we should try to do that or you want to see if there's anyplace else to, to look? I know Eric, you had an idea that you mentioned, do you want to bring that up? About, about combining a class?
Oh, yes. I had, I had the idea of pretty much combining the UAs of gym and health. To see if that could come under one UA and that would remove one, reduce one teaching position.
And, and that is not something that is unusual. A lot of schools have the PE teacher, also teaches how they, they go hand in hand. I think Rob was going to look at the minutes needed for middle school as opposed to elementary. What's mandated for health for middle school and elementary? So we have to make sure that they get everything that they need. As well as the number of PE minutes that they need. So they might need to just have it more often. And that is something to, to think about. So.
That's a possible, possible savings.
Yeah.
The other thing to mention is we've talked about cutting, so we, this budget does include eliminating two full-time teacher positions.
Yeah, so.
So my question is, is I thought at one point we had, I, we had discussed that it was actually going to be three.
But it is. We're adding special ed, which makes it a two-person cut. So I, I gave you a handout, it's Strapper School District Staffing Comparison Sheet, I think I, it wasn't in this, it was in the last meeting, I'm not sure if you still have it. But in that, I really laid out what that was going to map out to. And what it showed is going kid K one, two, would each have three teachers. Kindergarten, what the thought was there is that this is where K and one both had the same thought, which is that this is very formative years. Also with kindergarten, we never actually know what we're going to have until kind of the last minute. So with K and one, we felt keeping the three teachers made sense. It's formative years, it helps address the uncertainty, et cetera. Grade two is going to be our largest group next year in the elementary levels, and so we said, let's keep three teachers there as well. So that we can keep the class sizes down. But then grades three, four, and five would become two teachers each. And that's where we cut three teaching positions. But then we did add a special ed teacher position back in, so I said it's a net cut of two teaching positions.
With, with that being said, should, should the eleven hundred line reflect three reduced teachers?
And then one added to the special education.
And then one added to the twelve hundred line? So just so that they, just so that it shows.
Believe it or he does. I know the special ed.
The numbers, the note just says.
The note might not have been added.
Okay, yeah, the, the note just says reduce two.
I can tell you special ed numbers definitely includes the new teacher and I'd have to count on the regular ed.
Replace plus added, so maybe just added, adding one.
Yeah, so in fifth grade, what we're thinking is, so Eric, yes, I will double check that because I can't tell you with certainty that I did adjust that, I believe I did. But there's no quick easy way to look. With special ed, I can definitely tell I added that number and that's why I was able to just do the adjustment for her, which she said, what would it be if I took that person and made her part-time? So that one's definitely covered by special ed, but I can't tell you for sure that I adjusted regular ed.
I, I just, I just meant the note for clarity.
I will definitely adjust the note, but I'm just saying I believe I adjusted the numbers, but I will double check that and let you guys know. For fifth grade, what we talked about was returning fifth grade to an elementary status and making it transitional year in the sense that there would be two teachers. One would teach ELA and social studies, one would teach math and science. And the students would switch, so they would get that practice of going from one teacher to another teacher for a subject. But it's still two teachers rather than four, the transitions would be fewer, would be, I think, a little more structured, it would give them that sense. And once again, we're putting it back under the elementary umbrella, which means that it has some of those protective features and factors in place that you would have in an elementary. Middle school strictly becomes six, seven, and eight, just like in more traditional. And each of those, I shouldn't say that, it's not about each grade level, there would be eight teachers total in the middle school. Two English, two math, two science, and two social studies under the current structure that I presented to you. And once again, it works out mathematically. We had class sizes that were still reasonable across the board. And it allowed me, like I said, to cut the three regular ed teachers, which helped bring the budget down by that equivalent of two people.
And just to say, it's only been the last maybe three years that the fifth grade was part of the middle school. For years, it was the elementary and that's what they did. They were with their, they just changed classes. Well, we used to have enough kids that we had three teachers because we had more like fifty kids in the grade rather than thirty. So now we'll do the same thing that we did forever.
So.
Do we have our current, like, our current class size?
Eric, can I have one more comment? Just because there might be people watching that are panicking right now. I don't believe we have to rip any positions based on what we already know for people that are leaving of natural reasons. Whether it's retirement or other, I don't believe we need to rip. I can't promise that. We won't know until people have all officially done the various things that they need to do. But at this point in time, I believe we have a position for everybody that is supposed to remain at this point in time. Now, once again, I'm not making that promise. I'm simply saying on paper, it looks good that I wouldn't have to do a reduction in force. And I just wanted to make sure that people at home know that we are definitely thinking about that because I could already imagine somebody going, oh my gosh, making a call and saying, we're losing our jobs. That's not right now the intent. We, we have been looking at through that lens carefully as well.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for that.
All right, let's look, is there any other questions, any other ideas?
I, I had, I had just some, a handful of lines that are mostly clarifying questions, not necessarily money-saving ideas. But on page five, it looks like line, the contracted services elementary speech line. Looks like that line has gone to zero because there's no anticipated needs. But if you go down to the line just below that, we're still spending fifteen hundred dollars in speech materials?
We have speech teachers here. So contracted services would be an outside person supporting or supplementing our internal. So we have two speech teachers.
Okay, so those are separate.
Yeah.
Gotcha. On the next page, page six, the twenty-two hundred line, the top, the top line in twenty-two hundred. On the next page, page six, the 2,200 line, the top, the top line in 2,200 stipends teacher curriculum. You have $4,000 for teacher PD, 100 hours at 40 hours, use grant funds first. So if you use grant funds, is the intent to reduce from that $4,000? Or would you, or are you anticipating on spending that $4,000 after the grant funds are gone?
So this year, we definitely spent more, we just had grant money that supplemented what we had budgeted. So, I mean, obviously, if the grant dollars are great enough, we could potentially see a reduction there, but I don't feel safe lowering the 4,000.
Okay. I noticed on the, on page seven, the salary in the admin assistant, SAU line, is a little more than $225, uh, 225 days and 21 an hour. And that calculated at $37,800.
Where, what line are you running on?
23, 20, 51, 10, 002.
Let me look, see what I got in here, because I'm just taking it off a spreadsheet, it's doing the work for me.
Okay.
We have copy on something here or there, my friend, let's take a look. I am not seeing an explanation for that, so. Yeah, I think we have two administrative assistants in the SAU office that fall under this budget line. I'm looking at my screen. They make $37,800. $37,800 times two is not that number. I'm thinking there was a mistake there, sir.
All right, Dan.
I think it should be 75, 600. And let me just punch that in and tell you what that does. I don't see any, I can't understand why it would be anything else because everything else is on these. So everything from FICA, you have to retirement, health, dental, everything, they all have their own lines. So yeah, I'm not sure why. I can't even see where that would have come from. I just love when weird stuff like that happens, especially when it's in our favor.
Right, that's 16,862.
I just got to change the, the change I'd made for Katrina, otherwise we're going to get a false number. Okay, here we go. Salary making that 75, 600. Enter. That's, why did we drop so much last year? Weird, I feel like I'm missing something.
Wasn't, wasn't there a change in the?
Don't know, but the new bottom line, if that number's accurate, would be 4.3%, so we dropped a percent. A point, a point one percent. So I, let's say that I think you're right and I think that that change is authentic. I will put my brain on it tomorrow when I'm not thinking of 500 other things at the same time.
Okay.
And I'll see if I can think of why that would be different. I can't imagine why it would be those two administrative assistants at a set rate. When you do the math, it comes to that number, I don't know why. So I'm thinking that is a mistake that has been caught and helps us.
And the student services one is already accounted for at that?
Yeah, the student services, right, that's, that's the first thing I thought too. But even if I had that one in there, it would have been more than-
Right, it would be there, yeah. I wonder what the note was last time?
Well, was it, was it there-
We have our note from last one?
I can look, I mean, it was last year's, I'd have to go back in the last year.
Didn't, didn't the position change?
Yeah, well, we had, at one point, we had the bookkeeper.
Right.
And was the bookkeeper in that line and-
So that might be fundamental to this year too, just so you guys know. If that's accurate, this year is 92, 462.
I would, I'd have to see the note from last year because I think the note would explain why we had that.
That's why I brought my computer tonight, I was like, I bet they're going to have a lot of questions. I like my notebook.
Point one percent.
All right, let's scroll down to the SAU. And the current year budget, which would be last year's planning process. SAU admin assistants, 92, 462, it was 225-day assistant, HR previously in the business office line, $21 an hour. I did the math wrong last year and none of us got it.
Great.
So, and actually, it was that number the year before. Good lord. I don't know, like I said, there's got to be a reason somewhere. I just don't know. Oh, no, no, the year, I'm sorry, that's showing the difference. It was more because we didn't have it in the SAU the year before. But still, this year, we do have the 92, 462 budgeted and that is, I think, a mistake. So, good catch, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
You saved the taxpayer $16,000, 0.1%. Take it where you can, right?
That's right.
Take it anywhere we can find it.
On page eight,
Eight.
On the 23, 20, 58, 10, membership dues and fees. I see it's down $695, did, did something change?
Yeah, me, I continue to not take my NHSAA.
Okay, so that's not going to be secondly?
Last year, we had it in there, this year, I've cut most of it. There was a couple of, I might go to a couple of conferences, so I didn't cut the whole thing.
Okay.
But I won't be a member, so-
I thought I remembered you talking about that, I wasn't sure.
I haven't had time to go, it's been a long time, yeah, so I get that. I'm not complaining about it, but that explains your answer to your question, Eric.
Page nine,
Yes.
The repair, replace facilities lines, which are the, like, the bottom, fifth from the bottom.
Yeah, I'm on it.
You've got those three lines, repair, replace, equipment fixtures, replacement of furniture. And we know why they're snowplowing, but those have, are very high. We budgeted 5,500, spent 59,000. And then the same thing with the replacement of furniture, we budgeted 4,800 in spend.
59,000 includes something that we reimbursed for, I think, windows or something.
It always just shows up in that line, but if we, even if we went and got it out of the capital reserve fund, it would still show up on that.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to get a surprise for-
The reason, the reason I raised that, that repair, replacement of fixtures and facilities is that we are finding more and more old stuff in this building is finally breaking. And I just feel like we're not going to get away with these low numbers for much longer.
Well, that, that's, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that based on what I know we need, you know,
Right.
what you're saying, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to get hit with actually spending four times that.
We kind of have our 58,000 catch-all line that backs us up, plus we have I and B if we truly needed to jump into something. But I am trying to beef up a few of these facility lines just because so much stuff is getting so old.
Right. Yeah, that's all I had.
Very good, Eric. Anybody else?
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to, I guess, just say my piece a little bit for the salaries for regular education teacher. I'm bummed that we're in the position that we are cutting two regular, two regular education teachers to, basically because we feel like we're, our hands being forced because of our increase in special education costs. I know a lot of people have had concerns. You know, the public has had concerns about our low class, class numbers, our class numbers being so low. So I do think that at some point, yes, I agree that, you know, we can't have, we don't need class sizes of 10 for forever. I just worry about, I guess, how the structure of it's handled when you have different class sizes moving through. And, you know, for example, I think it was like this year's, you know, this year's kindergarten class has, has 30 kids. So essentially, next year's first grade class will have 10 kids in each class. But then you have like the current fourth grade has 38 kids. So potentially, say you had just a couple of kids move in to, move into fourth grade. Now you have two fifth grade classes of 20. So I just, yeah, I just feel like maybe we're not, I feel like some kids may fare very well in certain situations. Some other kids may potentially not. And I just want to make sure that we're not cutting too many corners in certain areas that, you know, has too much of a negative impact, so.
So is it, so-
It's just that we have-
What are the class numbers for each, for each grade?
Okay, so kindergarten, 30, grade one, 40, grade two, 36, grade three, 33, grade four, 38. And these are as of October, so they couldn't have changed. Uh, grade five, 50, grade six, 40, grade seven, 43.
You can stop there, you don't need to add one here.
Okay, so when we go to-
Now add one, each one of those numbers, see this wrote down because the grade levels would be at one grade higher.
Right, yeah, so, so kindergarten, the first grade will have three classes. Second grade, three classes. Third grade, two.
Two, two.
Okay, so that's, that's 17 and 18. And fourth grade?
Two, and this grade, two.
Okay, four, I mean, 33 kids, that's pretty low. So that's 16 and 17. Okay, and right now, that is 19 and 19.
Yeah, so you're, so basically, your two, your classes that are, I would say, would be like your current grade two and your current grade four have the potential to be fairly large classes. Depending on if you had, now it could change, people could leave too. But if we did have people add into those classes, then we end up in a position, because right now, they're, what, 18 and 19, class sizes of 18 and 19 this year.
Well, it, it, I will say, that's not abnormal to have 18 or 19 kids in a, in, you know, the upper elementary. I mean, they, we kept, I mean, if we, otherwise, if we had three, we'd have 10 kids in a class, again, or 11 kids in a class. It's, it's, we're just on that number that it's not too high, it's not too low.
Some of them are on the lower end, some of them are on the higher end. So I just, what does that look like long-term when you have?
So, just so you have our November enrollment numbers.
Yeah, my geez, hang on a second.
Oh, sorry, October enrollment numbers, so the end of October, so we went down-
Is that what we have already?
Probably, but I'm just saying, we went down to.
Well, that's what I just read off.
You usually come to us and say we lost another couple.
All I'm saying is every month you look at, we've lost. So September, we lost 12. August, uh, no, we didn't have it in August, sorry, June, we lost four. May, we lost one. So your worry of us increasing, can it happen, of course. But our trend is not increasing, it's decreasing. So April, we lost two. March, we gained one. February, we lost one. January, we lost one. December, we lost three.
Right, but those are also nets technically, right, those are-
I'm saying in elementary, K to A.
Right, that's a net for the whole. So it's like, there could have been, I mean, I know that there have been people that have moved into town. So, um, so there are some grades that could potentially at some point go up, but another one goes down or something. I'm just saying, I just want to make sure we're not basing it off of it, since these are, are hard actual numbers and that we could potentially have a grade five next year, you know, that has
20 kids per class.
20 or more, 21 kids per five.
So I'm not, I'm not anticipating or projecting, I'm using current numbers. So that's the direct answer to your question. I am using current numbers and saying 19 and 19 and that's, it's reasonable for a fifth grade classroom. I'm going to be clear, I think reasonable in fifth grade classroom would be 24. So you'd have to add 10 more kids, right?
Right, I think that there's also, yeah. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to say anything that comes off the wrong way. I think it also-
The group of kids and the, and the needs they have.
The teachers, the needs, the experience level. We have a lot of new teachers.
We're doing this academic support room, which I think, and having a tutor there, should be used to help if you do have some kids that-
I think that'll be more-
And we're adding a middle school para as well. So they'll have a dedicated para that can support a class that maybe is a little more unruly or that's a little bit larger, that's general ed. And we'll have the academic support room that you could utilize and I think that'll be more middle school centered.
I would say, I think both of those are middle school, my concern is more the elementary levels.
Do you think the academic support, I didn't picture that it's just middle school.
No, I'd say just, I think, when I look at who utilizes our extra services, it tends to be middle school that utilizes our extra services more than our elementary.
Yeah, I mean, I see elementary, it's, that's something where they're going to really be receiving that support mostly in their classroom. Unless somebody's in like, if someone's like, oh, I need to go get extra help on this, you're not going to see a second grader, like, going back. I don't see-
No, I don't think the second graders, but I would think fourth and fifth graders, the teacher could send to the, to the academic support some kids if they want to work with the tutor.
Nobody's stopping anybody from doing anything. I'm just simply saying, I anticipate more middle school kids will be in that room than elementary kids. But here's the thing, it's a trade-off. I have no personal buy-in to my way or the other. If you feel that fifth grade would be better served by three teachers, then we just have to change the budget and put a teacher back in. It's, it literally is no skin off my teeth, I just, I'm trying to do what the board asked me to do, which is where can you trim? How sharp can you make that pencil? That's what I've done. I said, okay, if this is our goal, which is to get this budget as low as we can, this is where I can see cuts happening. Fifth grade can have 19 and 19 and be okay.
I think that if it's, for fifth grade, I think 19 is okay. If it were like 23, I wouldn't like them, I wouldn't feel comfortable.
You don't like that in eighth grade, so, but that is part of the problem.
But 19, you know, around 20, fifth grade, they're not, like, they're not tying their shoes. You're not doing like what you do in kindergarten, first grade.
Since we're on the subject of fifth grade and we talked a few minutes ago about it going back to the elementary school, would that affect sports? Because currently, aren't fifth graders allowed to try out for teams?
Only if they need it, if, if we don't have, like, this year, we only had 10 girls for basketball. And this is from sixth to eighth grade. So we had to open it up to fifth graders. We did the same thing for girls soccer, I think. Like, for some reason, especially with girls, we did not have enough kids.
Okay, so it's just on asking you?
We look, if we do six to eight and we see how many kids sign up.
I, I thought that had changed a couple of years ago.
And now, from the surveys that we received, people did not want those fifth graders on the team. A lot of negativity about that. So we went back to the original thing was six to eight, but we would put fifth graders on if we needed to. And it seems to be in the girls' boards, we don't have enough girls to want to play sports, right? There were only 10 girls from sixth to eighth grade for basketball, for two teams. And even when we add the fifth graders, would-
There's seven more.
Seven more?
Yeah.
So we really only have 17 girls, which I wish we had more girls, I wish we could do more, encourage more girls to play sports.
One final thought on Katrina's point. If you, I mean, you've got, I think, one more meeting before we got to lock this thing down. So I think you've got time. I am going to say that one of my hopes is that any changes you would like to see getting to me by December 19th. That way, I can do some work prior to the holiday break and I'm prepared to come back with that next board meeting in early January. So that's one of the questions, I mean, it's on our, it's on the schedule. If you have had a chance to look at the schedule, it says December 19th, final suggestions to Rob. That's, once again, it's just so that hopefully that January 14th, I think it is, meeting, we can hopefully agree that this is the budget we want to move forward with. Obviously, we still have one more meeting and we need it, but that's really late in the game. If we wait two more weeks and do it on that Wednesday, that's the Wednesday before the annual budget hearing. It's just a really short window to make changes, so think on it, sleep on it, just do on it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I've, I've slept on it, I just, it just doesn't sit well with me, I just-
You know what, what is, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I just, it, it has been bothering me for a long time, ever since we started talking about this. It, you know, I think that we're doing wrong by some kids. I think that the other thing is, you know, I guess it's because like, you know, we're going to, I, like, go back to it. I know that the younger grades, I agree, want smaller class sizes, but we're going to have a first, first grade classes next year just like we have kindergarten classes this year, with ten kids in each class, right? But then we have, you know, the later mid elementary school years that are gonna have eighteen and nineteen kids. So I'm just like, what are we doing, you know, I mean, it sounds like, you know.
I, I agree, but what do we, what do we hear every, every year, and the one the town gets up, and they said, these class sizes are too small.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is, is that like, we, you know, we, you know, we keep having, the other thing to consider is that we do have, you know, some newer teachers that are gaining experience. And so yes, I mean, we hope that we get to a place where, you know, every classroom is thriving, no matter how many students are in it, right? But, um, I think that we do need to recognize that there, there will be situations where classrooms and educations do suffer when we get up to the eighteen, nineteen, twenty mark in the elementary school levels. And people are already moving their children out of our school district. And I think that they're gonna continue to if, when we go that route, and is it worth it? Like, I think that people are gonna say, my child's not getting the education, the attention that they need. I agree that ten kids is too few. I think that eighteen and nineteen is pushing being too much in the elementary, in the elementary level.
So if we're looking at the upper elementary, like fourth and fifth, I mean, fifth, we had in middle school this year, but back to elementary. I mean, we could look to, to a general para for the elementary with those hours that were a little bit reduced as we discussed.
You can do anything you want, guys, just every addition.
So I mean, like, because having another person, it's something we can look at to see where, where we end up.
And now, just, I just wanna let her know, putting your teacher back in brings you up to five point two percent. And that's acknowledging your fifteen thousand dollar cut from the stake you found. Adding your ninety-three thousand dollar teacher back in, like I said, up to five point two percent. So once again, it's trade-offs, right? It's like, okay, can we live with nineteen students in a classroom? If the answer's no, okay, but then you've gotta be able to explain that to a taxpayer. What would it be with three teachers, just for here, I was saying? So it's, uh, thirty-eight divided by three, so.
You just have like twelve, twelve, and thirteen?
So that's where you're gonna-
Twelve, thirteen, thirteen.
Right, so that's where you're gonna have to explain to your taxpayers that you think it's okay for a fifth grade to have twelve, thirteen, thirteen.
And, and I will say, first grade and second grade, the kids, they are a lot younger, they need a lot more attention, they can't do things independently, so even ten is very small.
It is, without a doubt, but once again, I suggested going to two when people thought that fifteen was too big, so.
I don't think, I, I mean, I, I, I wish that every class could just evenly be fifteen kids, and it would solve our problem, okay? But that's impossible. You know what I mean, it's like, I feel like we're just like, it's like one extreme to the next, and I just don't know if we wanna be on the bad side of things.
Well, one thing we've talked about in the past, and not, and we didn't wanna do it reactionary, we wanted to do it if it made sense, was if it made sense to have a mixed grade classroom. And I don't know that we necessarily would do this at this point, but I'm always open to that idea in the future, if it makes sense educationally.
I think it makes sense potentially at the middle school level, where it looks more like a high school type situation, right? Where you do have mixing of grade levels and classes and whatnot. I don't, I, I don't agree with it in, in any, in elementary schools. I mean, I guess if we got some crazy different numbers, but-
I, I don't agree with that, I did teach in third, so I'm like-
Really small districts do it out of necessity, I don't think we're at that level.
So I think-
Natalie says evidence doesn't support elementary mixing.
Yeah.
Just to give you the experts opinion.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I mean.
I don't know either, but this is-
I, it's fifth grade, nineteen is not that bad for fifth grade, I think, that's my opinion. If it were first grade, I'd be a little bit more worried, just because there's, they're learning to read, they are, you know, they're not independent. Although, I talk about the classes of twenty-two in first grade, so.
I think one of the other things, Katrina, that I've been trying to balance is another one of your concerns, which is the, um, the yo-yo or the roller coaster ride. One of the things you brought up a few times is can we come up with a system that acknowledges these smaller class sizes? And the plan that I've created does that. So kindergarten and first, I agree, um, they're small. And, and I don't believe kindergarten's gonna suddenly explode next year and be this gargantuan size. Once again, what we talked about was those are those formative years, where you're setting all the basic information, you're trying to establish those things. Does a group of ten, a group of twelve, is that a problem? I don't know, and I can't answer that question. But what we talked about was from second to fifth grade, kind of where we have that larger group. And what we said is, we'll have three teachers, then the next year, that second grade, one of those second grade teachers will become a third grade teacher, the next year a fourth grade, so we have the consistent two, 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 two from grades two, three, four, and five, with another teacher following that larger group through, and that builds that consistency piece in. We're not looking every single year of adding and subtracting, adding and subtracting, we've got a person that's going to do that rotation with the kids. And then what happens when we get to fifth grade, if nobody, if no other class ever comes in larger? Well, four years from now, we might have to decide whether we want to keep that or not. So I'm just saying, I was trying to also balance that piece in, which is, so we don't every single year hire and fire, hire and fire. And that was my big concern with kindergarten in particular, since we don't know what we're going to get. We, we really can't guess either, we just don't know. If we were to say, let's cut that to two because of the current year's numbers, and then we suddenly get an influx in July and August, I don't wanna have to hire a kindergarten teacher in July and August. So that's what I'm saying, kindergarten and first, because I've always been told, first grade, if you're gonna have small class sizes, that's where you have small class sizes, is in first grade. Because that's where you're establishing all the classroom routines and processes, getting them started on math, getting them started on reading, just so many things that are happening in first grade, you don't wanna have ever large class sizes. So that's why I was thinking we consistently say three and three, kindergarten and first. It was the other grade levels where I'm like, okay, if we have the two, 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 and then we have that third person that can rotate with that larger group, worst-case scenario is we get two years in a row, or three, you know, two years, two large groups in, in that four-year chunk, we might have to hire somebody to cover that other year.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's the thing that I'm thinking, like, okay, so we're, that, we're gonna have three teachers that travel with the current largest elementary group of forty, but that's like, not that far off from some of our other groups, they could-
Just one of the group.
Right, so it's like, a couple, you know, a, a couple numbers move, and all of a sudden, it's like, that's not our biggest group, so what about, you know what I mean, I don't know, it's just, yeah.
So I was thinking when I, because I was thinking like, it is only off by a couple of kids, but I was also thinking, the older they get, the less likely that they need to have the smaller group sizes. So that's where I was thinking like, okay, I feel like I'm justified in fifth grade having nineteen and nineteen with this plan, even though the other group is only forty kids, only, you know, two more, ten more kids, but that's a younger group. Now, we may say, maybe a larger group comes in before that group gets to fifth grade, we might say twenty and twenty's okay for that year, if they stay at forty. And we, instead of having that person go all the way to fifth grade, we take that third person, put them back in second grade. So it, it is a buffer for us to have that ability to recognize that the older they get, the larger that group can be. So I was thinking that too, that it's only two kids difference, but I was also like, but they're considerably older.
Can anybody look up what Nottingham has for their, um, classes, class sizes right now? I don't know, I would just look to them. I, I think that we're so used to small classes, I don't think, I think when we see a number that's, you know, a little higher, it's probably normal for many people.
Yeah.
According to this search, by the way, just to fill in something for you, Eric, um, I do not see a minimum number of hours for health or PE classes at the K to eight level, that doesn't mean this is accurate, I'd wanna do a deeper dive. Just has instructional hours, so it's possible that this isn't a problem at all. And that might be a way for you-
I'm, I'm going back thirty years to when I was going here, and I remember-
High school does specify both.
We have, uh, we'd have health taught by either the nurse or by our classroom teacher.
Uh, Nottingham is fourteen to one, average student teacher ratio.
No, I mean, I wanna know how many, I wanna see their class sizes like we do, their attendance. Because you're gonna say the kindergarten is one grade, and then the sixth grade is another. I wonder, um, class sizes per grade. I wonder if it would be in there. Or even, you look, we're Harringtons. All right, well, we can look at that to compare it to other districts too, I think that we're very low.
They have five hundred and twelve kids, and their pre-K to eight, we have-
Three hundred and sixty.
Well, you put that, you're not saying people can get-
Their, their, their pre-K, which I think is another, let me just get to our enrollment numbers. Here we go, our total pre-K to eight.
Oh, I found it.
You found it?
Yeah.
Did you have a specific grade?
Yeah.
They're, they're-
Three hundred and seventy, they're quite a bit larger than us.
Do they have any kids there, how many? Eighteen to twenty? I thought that they did, yeah.
Correctly, I mean, it varies.
What is it in like fourth and fifth?
Eighteen, seventeen, twenty-two, twenty-one.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, so, once again, I was trying to balance things that Katrina said, things that others had said, things that the community has said in this plan, and, I mean, I've addressed as many of those I can, but it's, it's just me proposing. I mean, you obviously have final say on what you want it to look like. So if you wanna change anything, just let me know. And Eric, that's a very interesting idea, I'll definitely discuss with Natalie and-
But the health in the gym, I, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great idea. They just go hand in hand, and many of the same, like a program, they have their PE teachers are teaching health.
Well, once again, we were, we were planning to have the teachers do both, but to reduce from two teachers to one in that area, I had not contemplated at all. So we'll have some discussions on that, and I'll, I'll give you guys some sort of heads up about where we, where we think we're at on that.
Do schools do that now with, um, technology and library or media center, do they combine those campuses as well every day?
I don't, I don't want to here, and the reason I don't want to is because I think we need more tech support, not less. So once again, we're looking at this position here, and the library is becoming more tech-centric, and we're looking at our tech teachers taking on a more tech-centric role as well. So I don't wanna see us decrease that by combining it, so I would-
I think we get that feedback from the ground too, that we need to have more of that.
Right, right.
So could we, I think the answer's probably yes, I just don't think that's, I don't think that's a good idea for us this calendar year.
What else, can we see, anything else, is anybody? What, I will, there's something I wanna say, I'm gonna have another, because I, I have something to say that might be helpful too, with what we're talking about. All right, so what are we looking at now, we're looking at, at the, the tabs, revenue? Oh, Katrina, you heard that question about the catastrophic aid.
Oh, yeah, so my question was, do we account for potential revenue from the catastrophic aid for special education?
If it's on there, we do, but I don't think we do, for some reason that's not ringing a bell with me.
Where, because I know that sometimes it can be unexpected, because it depends on if we hit a certain dollar amount, I believe, with a kid. But I feel like seeing the massive increases in out-of-district placements, we must know for some situations that we're going to hit that number.
Yeah, yeah.
And is that something, or has that just become unexpected?
I wouldn't wanna touch the other ten-foot pole without Melissa and Greg.
I, I-
And probably Greg chiming in on as well.
So Katrina, did you read this, all right, so if the average cost per pupil is twenty thousand dollars, district must pay the first seventy-two thousand dollars of costs on their own. The state then reimburses eighty percent of the costs that exceed that amount. For expenses that exceed ten times the average cost per pupil, like two hundred thousand dollars, the state is responsible for a hundred percent of the costs, so-
A hundred percent of the cost after the two hundred?
Yes, so I think what Katrina is saying is like with, you know, because we know that it's so expensive, um, for trans- I don't know if they take transportation into account when we are, um, transporting kids out of district.
We always, we have both lines that we look at.
So, so therefore, would we exceed like that two hundred thousand dollars per student to be reimbursed, anything over that?
This is a really dangerous area for me, just trying to, I really think that I could take these questions back, but I would want Melissa and probably Greg both, where they do the annual reports and all this stuff. And I would also say that my feeling is, I've never seen a consistent number with catastrophic aid ever. I wouldn't know how to budget it, so even if we got ten thousand this year, would I be guaranteed that next year? No, so that's where I really worry, is that it's the uncertainty. So a lot of these numbers are lower than what you could make them, that's, that's part of, so we're looking at the revenue under tab three now. You look at any of these, preschool tuition, we could make that twenty thousand dollars, and realistically, that could happen. But we do a safe number, we say sixteen, because we think we're gonna get, that, that's the more likely number. Uh, interest for our bank accounts, thirty thousand, what you keep seeing, like I keep, it was thirty-six in twenty-four, twenty-five, so why am I not making it thirty-six? It's really based on when we get our money from the town, from the state, when we get grants reimbursed, how long it sits in the account prior to us expending it. Lord, I don't know how to figure that out, so we get, and Greg goes through these numbers with me, we put thirty thousand down because we're like, we think that's a safe number. What I don't wanna do is overpromise and underdeliver. I'd rather us have fund balance every year, because I underestimated each one of these.
Yeah, no, understood, I just wasn't sure if there was a, potentially a large amount of revenue front.
Because it seems like it should with the amount that we're paying.
I thought we talked about it before too, and there's a lag time associated with, right?
There is a lag time, for sure, I think it's a year later.
I think that's part of the, it's hard to, exactly.
I don't think you get it in the year that you think you're gonna get a year of-
And it's always why it's hard to budget and, you know.
We need to have a presentation on catastrophic aid.
She gave us a whole-
We need to have another.
But, but here's what I would also argue, guys, is, so, I don't know if you saw the fund balance, so we thought we had two hundred and something thousand dollars, at the end of the day, we had a hundred eighty thousand, three hundred twenty-one. It was a lot less than what we thought it was going to be, because bills that came in after the effect, like after that June thirtieth deadline, other things that had to be paid, and so our two hundred and, I think it was thirty thousand that we thought it was going to be, went down to a hundred eighty thousand, three hundred twenty-one at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five, when you finally saw the bottom line numbers. That's what we actually gave back to the town. So I think we also wanna just be careful, you know, if, if we have cat aid, that just means that it's more money going back to the taxpayers. It's like, we can, we can budget it in now and say, let's put ten thousand for cat, cat aid, and then we get twenty thousand, well, we give ten thousand back. Or we don't budget any, we give twenty thousand more back than we anticipated. I think, no matter what, we have enough uncertainty in our budget, that I think having more padding is better than less padding, was kind of the conversation you had with me earlier about that one line that I was trying to take another five thousand from. We are trimming this thing so tight, at some point, what happens, right? What happens? We're gonna have to tap into the special ed fund, I mean, that's the easiest one to tap into, because we overspend it every year.
It's gonna be gone.
And it would be gone, and so I think, once again, I think we want fund balance, I think we want every year to have that excess money we can then make a decision about tapping into. So I just would argue not to put that money in there, even if you could, because it's extra padding, it's extra relief that we maybe don't anticipate.
Right.
Um, you know, I see one of the things on there is other state aid, it could be more, we get, we get all sorts of weird aid from the state, but I don't know what it's going to be, so. The other thing too is EFA, EFA pays out, it's going away, I think next year might be the last year.
It's also worth noting that our adequacy continues to go down, so we're taking on more of the burden because of that, so.
Adequacy and statewide education property tax collectively between the two do continue to drop, and that's concerning.
And they have for several years.
Okay, so, the local tax rate, oh, boy.
Fourteen point four six is where I'm at right now, per thousand. Now, that's at ninety-five, so that's the other thing we need to talk about, so up until now, I, the second, so I have two pages. One says ninety-five percent, look at the other one, at a hundred percent, it's fourteen point three two two percent.
You're not supposed to, yes.
Debbie brought this to my attention, I've never read it, heard it, it's not on the charts.
It is on the chart. They guarantee, when you look at your adequacy amount, it tells you, you're guaranteed ninety-five percent of what the number is. They guarantee you ninety-five percent, they don't guarantee you a hundred percent, so when you're talking about-
What I meant was, it's not on the chart, is I didn't see this magical note that says, hey, make sure you budget ninety-five percent, I just didn't see it. So I haven't connected, I've been budgeting a hundred percent, and you can actually see that we did not get the whole amount. We actually got seven percent less of adequacy, and we- We actually got seven percent less of adequacy, and we got four point three percent less of the state education property tax. So the reality is, is that it's great, let's, let's budget ninety-five percent. I just wanted you to understand, that's less than what I've been budgeting in the past. So there's part of the impact of when you see that fourteen point four six is because last year I did budget a hundred percent. This year, I'm budgeting ninety-five percent. And that was a conversation Debbie and I had, I don't know what, a week, week and a half ago, and I was like, oop, my bad. You know, I, this is not my area of expertise. I do the best I can, and that was one area that I made a little boo-boo on, but.
Anyway, so let's look at that tax rate. We also have to say, we're also going to be, we're negotiating a contract, too, which I would imagine is going to change that tax rate.
Yeah, so we're up almost a dollar per thousand without that negotiated warrant article. So that's where we're at right now, and that's without adding in that teacher that we were talking about. That isn't including, Eric, your $50,000 catch, so there'll be some additional tweaks, but just recognize, we're at a dollar kind of as it stands right now. I'm just going to round. I'm going to say it's a dollar. I know it's just a couple cents less, but. So any changes we make, up or down, will impact that, but the only changes I've really been hearing tonight are up. So, you know, should we add this? Should we add that? Another para, another teacher?
Well, I think the health and PE idea is a great idea. And what I, I was just thinking, if we were able to do that, we could possibly, possibly add a general para to elementary to help, to pull out kids in the learning lab. What are you doing?
Natalie, I'm responding to her.
It's like you're talking to me.
She said something about combining content areas is interesting, you know, like she was, but I wanted to make sure she understands. We're saying, we're going to go from having a PE UA and a health UA to a PE-health UA. So in other words, we're going to go from five UAs to four UAs. I just want to make sure she understands.
Or they can, they can work it out. They can work it out, they could have it twice, twice as much, twice as often, or something like, I'm sure.
Yeah, she says she understands, and she's not disagreeing with it, so.
All right, so.
That's a solid possibility.
Because we need to go into another non-public. So do we have, do you want to go through, do you want, any other budget questions?
I'm good with budget stuff.
Is there anything else you want to see me work on? Is there any other, like, a lot of these documents are now not aligned with the current budget, because they were worked off of previous. Was there anything that you were like, oh, I'd really like to see with this new numbers, what that looks like? Would you like to see a budget with cutting a PE teacher? Would you like to see a, like, but when do you want? Do you want to wait till the next meeting, or do you want me to send this to you?
I, I think that we should get that before, because we're not going to have another meeting until January.
Right.
Right?
So, okay.
So that we can look at it and think, because January, we really need to make some permanent decisions.
When, when are we, January fourteenth?
Yes, I think.
And, oh, when, when are we, when are we going to set the hearing dates and the district meeting dates? We usually do that.
They already are set.
Oh, they, they already are set?
You can, you can, if you need to vote on it, then you can vote on it, but I already have them in.
And we've been using them for the negotiating.
Okay. Yeah, usually we do that as a motion, so I didn't.
Okay, anything correspondence? Do we have any correspondence? All right, community calendar?
We are probably just going to talk about the budget and mention the dates of the district meeting and the.
Budget hearing?
Budget hearing.
Perfect. Did you also mention that when negotiating a contract?
I, I think we had mentioned it, but we'll mention it again.
All right, committee updates. We can just go through this very quickly. Do we have any major committee updates?
So I just, policy committee? I have a policy, and I brought it with me in case you wanted to look at it here. If you don't, that's fine. But we have a problem with, we had a guardian who was apparently under the influence, and we don't have a policy that tells our staff what to do in those circumstances. There is a policy out there, it's called KFA. We don't have it. And one of the things that we were, like, we're going to follow this policy, even though it's not board policy, because we need some guidance. What I had said was, do we want to skip over policy committee, or do you want to wait? Because I have it in, I just needed to know.
I think it should go to policy committee.
Okay. So we're just, so it's, it's public record, we're going to follow proposed policy KFA until we have an official policy, because it seems to make sense.
All right, is there anything else? The only thing we mentioned is the athletic survey went out, and the date is going to be resent out tomorrow. Anything else? Any other committees? We talked about negotiations where Katrina and I are meeting on Monday again to negotiate, and anything else? Okay, all right, so we can just go, there's set future board meetings.
Right on, there's the annual meeting and the budget hearing, Eric.
So do, do we want to motion those? Because we, we've always motioned those in the past.
Yes, why don't you do that?
Okay. I'm just circling them, so I have them.
January twenty-eighth and March seventh.
All right. Yeah, I got that. So I move that we accept the proposed annual budget hearing date for January twenty-eighth at 6:00 PM in the Stratford School cafeteria, and the annual district meeting for March seventh, Stratford School Gymnasium at 9:00 AM.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second discussion?
We usually have snow dates also.
Yes, thank you, we do.
Usually the budget hearing is the next night.
Yes.
And then I think the annual district meeting is.
Wednesday, yes.
The next Wednesday evening.
Do you want dates, or?
Yes, that'd be great. So, so January twenty-ninth.
January twenty-ninth is easy, when that's the next night. For the March one, it would be November.
March eleventh, okay, and that would be at six.
Six PM. So I will amend my motion to include the snow dates of January twenty-ninth at 6:00 PM for the budget hearing, and March eleventh at 6:00 PM for the annual district meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
No, second?
Okay, discussion? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, Katrina, and Debbie. All righty, so public comment?
Um, yes, I have, I have so many thoughts right now. So.
You want to just state your name?
Sorry, Debra Mankus, one, two, three, Sunny Upstairs. I, I missed the last couple of meetings. One, because I thought it was only, I thought it was a public, because it said CPNA, and so I was confused. And I missed another meeting for, for another reason. But from the, the meeting that I went to in October, to this meeting, I feel like the narrative has shifted rapidly from growing the school, strengthening programs for enrichment. I was excited to hear that the budget was going to be growing at the pace it was going at. Now, I feel like the budget that has been discussed tonight is like undershooting where the minimum that we should be at in order to fully provide the value, valuable education to our community. And so I don't know, like, what did I miss between now and then, but like, I feel like we're, like, I'm in a completely different world than we were a month ago. And based off of what was brought up at the, the first meeting, it was like, this is what the community wants, and now we're like, how do we cut, 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 cut? Is the whole conversation that I've heard tonight. And I, and I, and I take it, I truly, truly know, everybody's trying to do their best. And I know that there, there are certainly community members who are like, struggling to identify how they're going to pay for everything. But I think that is a completely separate thing that we need to work on as a community, without taking away from the kids. So I'm just really confused. And I don't know, it's like, did I miss a bunch of people coming in the last few weeks and saying, no, this is terrible idea? Or is there, you know, people, people in the community are, you know, coming and saying, hey, no, this is a terrible idea to have a 7.9% budget. Cut it to half of that, which is barely keeps up with inflation. It doesn't even keep up with inflation. It doesn't even keep up with, like, what we need to maintain, not just to maintain, but to grow. We talked, you know, the North Star. Aren't we going to be the best school, so we, so we're not bleeding students every month? You know? Like, that was a comment, that's, I heard that tonight. We're bleeding students. Why are we bleeding students? Because, why? Are they going somewhere else because they can't get the education that they need here? I don't, I really, I, I, I'm sorry that I missed. I tried, I tried, I've been trying to come in. So I know what's going on, and, and every meeting that I've been prior, I felt like we were on this same journey of heading towards being the best school in the state. So that we get students to come here. There's even, there's even, they're even talking about that, like, at the state level of like, you know, of creating a situation where students can go wherever they want, increasing that opportunity. We want the students to come here. We want to be the school that survives. We want to be the community that has a school in five, 10 years down the road. Is there, is there any insight that can be shared on what happened?
I'll be here. One thing about the enrichment, we're still including the enrichment with the Spanish program is still included in here, and then we're looking into, I think you've missed, we had a meeting with updates about robotics. Do you want to share that?
Sure, so there's a lot of opportunities. I have an architecture gear, and they have a lot of connections with robotics programs. We're also talking to Co Brown, because they have one, and they work closely with UNH. So I did get some contacts with that, and there is ability to get grant money, to get materials, to get that started. So that was an update that was provided to us, and that we are still pursuing that.
Can I add a piece? So we, every year, start off talking and dreaming, and what can we add, what, what needs to be changed, and that's always normal. And then, at some point in the process, you say, okay, now sharpen the pencil and identify the areas that can be trimmed safely without causing problems. And you've heard the debate tonight. I mean, one of the trims is, you know, fifth-grade teaching. Can we do two with nineteen kids per classroom, or should we have three with 12, 13, 13? And you can see the problem, right? 12, 13, 13 is definitely too small. Nineteen and nineteen is being argued as being too big. But what is the answer? I can't have two and a half, you know, so, you know, then we talk, can you combine grade levels? And then we get the expert responding to me via text saying, no, that that's not considered to be good practice in the elementary levels. So we are truly caught. So what you're getting right now in this meeting, that you didn't have in that last meeting, is the true debate section of the budget process. So we have a lot of the dreams. I mean, this was all not green. Now it's all green except for two. One is a no, and one is a possible, we're still working on. Those were the dreams. They've been at it. Green means we put it in there. So a lot of that stuff that you're, that you've heard in those previous meetings are in there, extra paras, extra Spanish, extra looking at those enrichment opportunities. Those are in there, and we're working on those. What tonight's conversation was is, okay, but there's other parts of the budget that we need to tweak. Like, he caught an error that I made. I mean, that was a $15,000 error. So that's been fixed. And that's the whole purpose of tonight's meeting, is to say, okay, now let's really dive into the nuts and bolts. You just happened to come on a nuts and bolts night. And this is normal. This is a normal budgetary process that we're going through. The next one, June fourteenth, oh, I'm sorry, June. I wish, I'm sorry. January fourteenth will probably be very much like this. We'll once again be arguing over one type of thing that might have high value to it, that might have a serious impact, and we'll talk about those bottom lines. We'll say, okay, if we put that teacher back in, and we have the 12, 13, 13, it's going to bring us up to 5.2%, and part of the conversation has to be, we have a sizable number of people that come to annual meetings that are like, why do we have class sizes of 12, 13, and 13? Like, they get mad about that, and I don't blame them. It is too small. What I don't know is how to fix that. Because on the other side, I, I guarantee you, there's a ton of people that would agree with Katrina, that nineteen and nineteen is just too big. You're going to get less individualized instruction, less individualized supports. We're going to, but once again, we're adding a middle-school resource room, that's one of the greens. Or, actually, it's a school-wide resource room, I know, we're debating about who's going to use it, but middle-school kids could use it. Fifth grade could use it, right? They'll be accessible to them. And we're talking about adding more, another para, and what that para might be able to provide, does that offset the nineteen and nineteen? So these are just the tough conversations that we're going to have at this point. I don't think anybody's lost the dream of that visionary stuff. It's just tonight's meeting had to be about the nuts and bolts, and, okay, where is that bottom line going to be? What conversations do we anticipate at the budget hearing, and as well as the annual hearing? So I don't think you're out of touch. I just think that's the purpose of tonight's meeting.
The other piece is that there are no salary increases for contracted employees in this budget. So because it's a negotiations year, that'll be a separate warrant article, so that'll be in addition to this budget. So it does not include any salary increases for all para professionals and teachers.
Right, and so, once again, it's 4.4%. So I can just tell you roughly what, I don't know what the number will be, but if I was just to say, add, I'll say add seventy, $700,000, so just throw it out there. I don't know what it would be, so nine oh five. The total increase would be 10.4%. So if I, so once again, that separate warrant article, the total increase is going to be a significantly higher number. So you're saying we're out of alignment with that, but that's because, in part, this one is not including any B raises.
Yeah.
Or.
That's, that's how it looks, yeah.
Yeah, I'm doing that, because that's, number just scares me to death, so I'm doing that. Actually, I'm doing Katrina's as well for right now.
Yes. Can I add some things to just about, since we talked about the meeting? I think another piece we missed that is kind of, I guess, for me, the reality of the budget is the budget drivers. So we look at increases from last year, and we have some pretty substantial increases in special ed. And as I said, we're getting less money from the state, so those are things that we have to try to work through. And as we noted, we don't want any cuts from regular education, but we also realize that there's substantial increases that we weren't probably paying attention to, and we had those visionary discussions. So that's another level of just trying to sort out priorities and where things stand based on last year's budget versus this year's. And of course, inflation, things get more expensive.
So I don't think you've missed anything. I think you're right where you're supposed to be. You just didn't necessarily understand the purpose of tonight's meeting, which is to hone in on specific things, have these debates, have these conversations, get the mental juices flowing. And you can see, nothing was really decided tonight. It's just conversation that's going to then spark final decisions by the June fourteenth meeting, because we do have to lock it in at some point. And then the budget hearing happens, and people are going to raise new issues and new concerns, and.
It's a process.
It is.
We usually start off with, you know, like, the best-case scenario, and then we have to go to reality.
That was me, 7.9%.
Like, without the salary increase.
Without salary.
And without, yeah, without that contract, so.
I was high in the sky for a little while there.
All right. Wait, one last thing. I just want to say, thank you all so much for everything you do, for the service of the community. I just, I'm passionate about this, but, and I know you all are as well, and so I just, I apologize for my ignorance.
Oh, no, no, no.
Please do.
We appreciate you, we appreciate you being interested. As you can see, we get a large crowd every time, so.
Thank you for coming to you.
A public of one.
Thank you.
Bring your pamphlet.
All right, do we have any other, okay, motion?
We're going into a non-public.
We're going to go into a non-public.
Do, under which letter?
Stage.
See? I move we go into non-public at nine eleven under RSA 91A32C.
Do we have a second? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Yes.
And Debbie?
Yes.
Okay, we're going into non-public. All right. Scooch.
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
We got to make sure this.
Thank you for your email earlier, too. The planner, we appreciate it.